We need to order, and we do have a quorum present. Do you want to start with anything, or just go right through here?
Just go right through there, sir.
Okay, we got public hearings out of number one. Any questions?
It's amazing that almost five years have passed, but it has, and so it's time to consider a continuation referendum. So this is your first step, so the governing body would order the election referendum, and then at the next meeting, we'll actually meet as the crime control board and approve that referendum.
How was the 20 years in both of those programs decided upon?
That's certainly staff recommendation. If you wanted to do a shorter period of time, you could. I wouldn't recommend it. You do have salaries that are dependent on the sales tax. So I would go for the longest period of time available, and if you go for a shorter period of time, you're just gonna have to go back for another election.
But we have other programs that are also dependent upon for salary, but we don't look to carry them out 20 years.
Well, you have property tax that supports it, or your utility rates that support it, and those certainly don't have to be voted.
Right.
Except they're the governing body.
So these could be looked at five, 10 years, whatever?
If the council wanted to. I don't have the statute in front of me, Melinda.
Well, yeah, but there is.
Five, 10, 15, or 20. Five, 10, 15, or 20. 20 is a staff recommendation, and that's the longest period available.
You know, I just feel like none of us know what's 20 years out for any of us are in program. And so staff took the position of the longest it can be instead.
Absolutely. This keeps your tax rate low, and I think it's always wise to, if you can cover salaries, especially public safety salaries with sales tax, that's a preference, because people who come to your community and shop in your community that may not live here actually help cover the cost of those salaries, and that seems very equitable to me. So that certainly would be a staff recommendation.
Citizens, they, pardon me, five years down the road, correct me if I'm wrong, but citizens could call for their own referendum.
They could. They could. I don't remember how that occurs. Have to double-check that.
Just like any other.
In the beginning, maybe a period of time. I don't have the statute in front of me. But we have 31 police positions and that, but yeah.
The council could always come back at some point in time and want to do a referendum to discontinue it also.
Yeah, if the statute allows, I mean.
Do you all remember what happened at the last election? What percent was in favor of this, and what was opposed to it?
It was overwhelming in Kuiper.
Yeah.
Two-thirds, three-quarters?
At least two-thirds.
At least two-thirds.
And that was for both of them?
Yes, sir.
Well, yes, I'm talking about both of them, not particularly one as opposed to the other.
I think last time.
Do we have any other programs out there that we are scheduling for 20 years out? I meant, you know, we have other things that are based on taxes and salaries and this and that, so.
One of those staff positions that we would have in a sales tax would be through, we have just a few through the 4B?
We have some, yes, that are supported by 4B, but 4B you never have to vote on again. Once it was passed, it's passed indefinitely.
Well, there's also capital expenditures, not just salaries involved with this. I mean, there's vehicle replacements, there's...
There are capital, but the real concern would be certainly for your employees at ongoing cost, because if this sales tax were to go away...
Then those employees would go away.
Those employees are gonna have to go away, or you're gonna have to have a significant increase in your tax rate, and these are public safety positions.
So if we speak in terms of not going away, but reduced income from into these programs, what happens to those employees?
I don't know if I understand your question.
My question is, you're stating that if this goes away, I'm saying let's not talk about it going away, but the income into these programs is reduced, what would also happen to those positions?
Are you talking about reducing the sales tax percentage?
Yes.
Sales tax goes down is what they say.
Yeah, it'd be the same effect.
They would be gone.
Or a certain percentage would be gone, maybe not all, if you kept a certain tax. But it can't be lower than it is, it's already...
Yeah, we discussed that before. I thought it was too much money was being generated into these programs, and you told me that it couldn't be lowered.
That's correct.
So staff's recommendation is 20 years.
Absolutely.
I don't see why we'd go anything less. I'd like to go 40 if we could. These are projects that the public voted on, that they wanted to, they wanted to have, and I hadn't heard anything negative about.
Neither have I, Mayor, but, you know, I'm trying to ask and find out if there's any options as opposed to 20 years. I mean, surely...
There's an option not to do it again.
I understand that also, Mayor, but I'm talking about time increments when a future council would look at this.
Again, you could do it five, 10, 15, or 20.
Could we do the 20, and another council look at it in five years? Is that what you said?
I think Liz is still looking for that.
So it's clear that voters at any time can have a petition to resolve it. The board at any time could move to dissolve it. I'm still looking to see whether the governing body, kind of like in this situation, if the governing body requests the referendum, then the board must do so. I haven't found equivalent language, but the board itself could always move to dissolve it.
Okay. Would that go to voters?
The board, which our... Crime Control District Board, or the city council.
Make a call for an election?
Yes, that's what she's saying.
Remember those people?
I don't know, I just...
Who are these people?
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. You have the same question on number two?
It would have been the same, yes, okay.
Anything else on number two? Number three, again, a public hearing?
Yes. Number three. I'd like to know if we could not make Poynter's and Decker concrete streets in this amendment that's being considered, and take that money, and whatever that money that it saved, put it towards the manhole covers situation, rehabilitation, which amounts to $165,000. I drove Poynter's and Decker today. They are both perfectly fine streets. They are both dead-end streets that support approximately 10 or 12 houses, maybe more. And there's one way out in about 100 feet that attaches to the main road ray that is concrete. That's an amount in of $165,000. I don't know where the sewer manhole covers that need to be fixed are. I was not provided where their location is, but I would like to see as many of those manhole covers rehabilitated now as possible. I would think that they are on main streets and streets that are more used than Poynter's and Decker, and that $65,000 or a portion thereof should be allocated to the manholes. And someone here maybe can speak on. I think of manhole damage in terms of running over it. The manhole is lower than the street, and to me, from a construction point of view, as a car runs over a manhole that's even with the street, it's smooth and no damage to speak of to the manhole. When I ran, when I run over a manhole that's sunk down, and my tire drunks down on it like that, to me, I'm doing more truck, causing more problems for that system. Now, if I'm wrong, you know, I would like someone to tell me that. So I would like that money to be, without knowing where these manholes are, but I would think that the traffic on those would be more than on Decker and Poynter's. And I would like to entertain not taking the whole $665,000 from the manhole project.
So the answer to your question related to could Poynter's and Decker be done in asphalt, absolutely. I mean, we're bringing this back to you because of council direction to do all streets in concrete.
Yes, ma'am.
But certainly it's a council decision, street by street. If you would prefer to do those in asphalt, you certainly can. David?
How much money, if we didn't do Poynter's and Decker in concrete, would we take out of there and go towards that $165,000 that's being direct, not directed to the manhole project?
David, what's that breakdown?
I don't have, I mean, I don't know what the cost is for both projects.
Yeah.
A bit in the total, so we don't know what, if we would just did Poynter's and Decker in asphalt.
Difference is 323.
Well, that was, that was, that was, that was the entire project.
Yeah, the Poynter's-Decker breakdown, I didn't break, in the memo, I didn't break it out from Hope's Prairie, but it originally was 70,000 to 90,000, so it might save a little over 100,000.
So a little over 100,000.
So if we saved over 100,000, that could be redirected back to the manhole cover project? And if I'm misspoken about how the damage is increased by wheels, you know, hitting on it when it's decreased, or, you know, then the area that supports it has to be rebuilt and so forth? Is that not correct? The area around the sunken manhole?
Well, and Jamie might want to correct me if I'm wrong, but I would suspect that the manhole project is really to address manholes where we have infiltration problems as opposed to manholes that might be sunken, although, you know, there may be some that are sunken that have to be fixed, but I think the majority of the problem is gonna be manholes that, for lack of a better term, leak. You get a lot of stormwater in them when it rains.
Jamie is checking, he said, yes, that's true.
And does this create any additional problems for the residents?
Just as a system issue.
I understand that, I understand.
Yeah, it was to head off potential problems in the future.
Okay.
We have, we have the other funding issue.
Yeah, what we recommended in the backup memo is you would still do those manhole covers? You would just do it via the utility fund, it would take somewhat longer period of time, it would be worked in with the rest of the project.
Okay, yeah, I saw in Jamie, I think it was Jamie's memo, the potential for funds to be, to cover this, is that correct? Is that where I saw that? Okay. And my final comment is, I chaired this committee twice, and I'd like to see the city take more responsibility for the streets within our jurisdiction. I feel as though that the funds which primarily come from the federal government are directed towards other programs. And so I would like to see us personally fix our streets and manholes and go to concrete and that sort of thing from funds other than out of the CDBG, which I think would leave more funds for the people that the federal government is sending the funds here for. I agree, I know that the program is allowed to do this. I also know that the program is allowed to take 20% for administrative costs, but it would be my suggestion and my preference to see us take care of our streets out of other programs.
Councilman Vaughn, I need to ask, what committee did you, were you on, or whatever that did these, that were working on roads?
CDBG.
Okay, so you're on the CDBG committee?
Twice, two, yes.
But you do realize that the council is the one that gave direction to do concrete streets everywhere?
And I agree with that, I voted for that.
Okay, and you're against that now?
No, sir.
But you are on these, these particular streets?
No, sir.
You're not? Well, why couldn't we bring in a Poynter's and Decker?
Because I thought that the money that was allocated for Poynter's and Decker, which I drove today, and are in perfectly fine shape, whatever that figure was, could be taken out and redirected towards the manhole rehabilitation program.
Okay.
Now, what was your other question?
That was the questions I had right there, and mainly it was a statement more than a question, that the council's the one that directed to go to concrete, not staff.
I have no, I have no problem with, because my, I was trying to say...
When we're right off the bat and start going towards, going back to asphalt streets in certain neighborhoods, you start going, okay, what are we doing there? And they're saying they don't have money for that one.
My issue was where the money was coming from to do it. I had no, I had no issue with concrete streets. I don't see it going backwards. I drove the streets, I thought that they were in decent enough shape to be put in asphalt, you know, for another year or whatever the timeframe would be. The issue was $165,000 total that was being taken out of CDBG money to, I mean, for the rehab of the manholes. So, no, I'm not against going, I'm not for going backwards, I'm just saying, hey, do we have a problem here with the main streets and these manholes that we should need to address and set this on aside?
How many manholes need to be fixed? I don't know.
City, why, quite a few, I don't have a list in front of me. David, can you?
Is there a thousand or a hundred?
Probably a thousand.
Okay.
This is a study that you do periodically on our drainage system, and RJN does that, council produces part of the budget, we fund that every two years. I think we've been actually moving it up, you put in about $50,000 a year or every two years to rehab those particular manholes. So it's not just, we've got this many that continually deteriorate. We do, as David said, it's mainly infiltration and inflow that we're trying to resolve over the course of time. This was just an issue out of CDBG that was allowed with funding. And then when we went into, with the council direction of moving toward from asphalt to concrete streets, that's what we needed to make this program work, to move those into concrete. We will have money to do manhole repairs, this is not the only money. We have that in what's budgeted in the, I think, last couple of years.
Thank you, Steve.
So you're still saying the same thing, that you don't want, you want to keep the asphalt streets on those two streets?
Well, it's been explained to me that it's really not an issue of additional damage with cars driving over them, or the manholes, and there are other funds that I knew were being applied to that program. So, no, I would not be opposed to making those streets concrete.
So just go back to the way it's laid out here? That's what we're talking about now?
Except, I would add that I would like to see the city take a bigger part in the future in funding streets repairs and that sort of thing.
Okay.
So...
I know we've spent lots of money on streets.
Yes.
And you have a ballpark what we spend a year on the streets?
On street rehabilitation.
Rehab new...
We allocate over $3 million annually, plus whatever we have on new streets.
We're spending a lot of money on it, so.
This is just a way to get additional streets done, using federal dollars. So council direction in the past has been that we invest in our infrastructure using CDBG money, so staff is followed by prior city council direction.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but we're cutting other things that the CDBG money could, was, could be used for, and that, pardon me?
As we always do, there's always a whole list, a long list, of items that are eligible for CDBG.
Yeah, land acquisition for affordable housing projects.
There's a number of social service agencies on this, I mean, there's, there's a long list, but it's really council direction on how you want to allocate your funds.
And this might be an interesting conversation to bring up during retreat, more because it's more policy and direction.
That's what we're, that's what we're about, right?
So, yeah, I'm thinking it's worth conversation, flag it and have that conversation at retreat.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Mayor. Okay.
Item four. Item five?
Donna, I'd like to ask, in item five, when we award these contracts for, I mean, whatever the amount is, in this case over $670,000, do we have in-house inspectors that are qualified to examine these complex rehab projects? Or do we have an outside contractor, contractor come in, and if we do, is that $670,000 represent the outside contractor?
We use in-house that would inspect.
We have the, a personnel that are qualified to...
And if we get to some area, like we need x-ray or any kind of work on a particular job, corrosion review, we do hire outside to do that special work.
If we felt there was a need.
So that would be in addition to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Part of our life.
Okay. Thank you.
Your question, everything?
Yes, sir.
Item six. Election. And that is it? We should be out of here by 9:30 or 10:00.
Now you're done.
Is there a game on tonight?
Some word, I'm in Madison.
Well, then there's no incentive.
Yeah, we do. Okay. And we will have a closed session tonight, so. Any other questions? We'll convene out in the chamber at 7 o'clock. First item on the agenda is invocation by Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson and pledge to the American and Texas flags by Councilman Gilmore.
Ask you all to please rise. A moment of silent prayer. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we're down to item one, public hearings. It's consideration of resolution requesting that the City of Lewisville Crime Control and Prevention District Board order an election referendum to be held on May 7, 2016, on the continuation of the district and its 1/8th of 1% sales tax for a period of 20 years. Comments? On November 8, 2011, the voters of the City of Lewisville approved the creation of the Crime Control and Prevention District for a period of five years, together with 1/8th of 1% sales tax to support the district's operation. Pursuant to Section 363.301 of the Texas Local Government Code, the district will dissolve on May 6, 2017, unless the district holds a continuation referendum and a majority of vote, voter, votes cast in the referendum are in favor of the continuation. Section 363.251 of the Local Government Code provides that the board shall order such referendum, and a majority of the Lewisville City Council request a referendum after notice and public hearings on the matter. The Local Government Code further allows the Lewisville City Council to specify the number of years for which the district should be continued. Should the city council adopt the attached resolution, the request for a referendum to continue the district and its sales tax for 20 years will be presented to the Lewisville Crime Control and Prevention Board at their January 25, 2016, meeting. Recommendation is city council hold the public hearing and approve the resolution as presented in the above caption. I don't have anyone to speak on this. Councilman Vaughn, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mayor, I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Vaughn?
May I make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn, a second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item two, public hearing, consideration of a resolution requesting that the City of Lewisville Fire Control, Prevention, and Emergency Medical Services District Board order an election referendum to be held on May 7, 2016, on the continuation of the district and its 1/8th of 1% sales tax for a period of 20 years. On November 8, 2011, the voters of the City of Lewisville approved the creation of the Lewisville Fire Control, Prevention, and Emergency Medical Services District for a period of five years, together with 1/8th of 1% sales tax to support the district's operation. Pursuant to Section 344.301 of the Texas Local Government Code, the district will dissolve on May 6, 2017, unless the district holds a continuation referendum and a majority of votes cast in the referendum are in favor of the continuation. Section 344.251 of the Local Government Code provides that the board shall order such referendum if a majority of the Lewisville City Council request a referendum after notice and public hearing on the matter. The Local Government Code further allows the Lewisville City Council to specify the number of years which the district should be continued. Should the city council adopt the attached resolution, the request for a referendum to continue the district and its sales tax for 20 years will be presented to the Lewisville Crime Control and Prevention Board at their January 25, 2016, meeting. Recommendation is city council hold the public hearing and approve the resolution as set forth in the caption. I don't have anyone to speak on this. Is anybody here to speak? Okay. Councilman Ferguson, do you have a motion to close?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Vaughn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, a second by Councilman Vaughn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item three, public hearing, consideration of amendments to the Community Development Block Grant, 2013, 2014, and 2015 annual action plans, providing funding for concrete Action Plans, providing funding for concrete street upgrades through cancellation and reduction of other projects. Administrative comments, the two thousand thirteen and two thousand fourteen CDBG Annual Action Plan submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development included two asphalt streets rehabilitation projects, Hoffers Prairie, Bunker Hill, and Padres Decker. The amendment would increase funding for those two projects by three hundred and twenty-three thousand to six hundred and ninety-seven thousand in order to upgrade the streets from asphalt to concrete. To make those funds available, it would then cancel the two thousand fourteen Land Acquisition for Affordable Housing Project, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and the two thousand fifteen Sewer Manhole Rehabilitation Project of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It would also use twenty-five thousand in unallocated funds and reduce the Housing Rehabilitation Project by sixty-four thousand. The CDBG Advisory Committee voted four-zero at its meeting on November seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, to recommend approval of the amendment. Recommendation is the city council approve the annual action plan amendments as set forth in the caption above. And I don't have any comments, cards on this. Does anybody wish to speak? Okay. Councilman Gilmore, do you have a motion to close?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing, a second by Councilman Tierney. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Councilman Gilmore?
Move to approve as written.
Second.
We have a, a motion by Councilman Gilmore and a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, next, we have the Visitors Citizens Forum. At this time, any person with business before the city council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. And again, I don't have any cards on this. We're down to E, consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with, uh, with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request, request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. And I don't have any cards on this, and I don't think there's anything from the council on this. Uh, Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve?
We have a motion to approve, second by Councilman Daniels. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item is reports. Nika, you're up.
No, mayor, just to say Happy New Year.
We don't have any other big deals going? If you could talk about?
Nothing to say right now, though. We have lots of stuff.
Yeah, okay. We don't, we don't need you to slow down on any of this stuff now. Tim? Russ?
Nothing, mayor.
Okay. Do we start with the lake again here?
You do, you do, mayor.
We have to start with the lake. Do you know anything about the lake right now and the level of it?
Mayor, if I could before he responds, I would like to introduce the city council to our new Director of Public Services, Keith Marvin. And I do think he has an exciting report for you on that very topic.
Okay.
I do have a lake level for you, Mr. Mayor. It's, uh, as of five o'clock this afternoon.
Is your mic, is the microphone, you have to hit that other?
Yeah.
Well, there you go. The new guy has to hold it down.
Yeah.
As of five o'clock this afternoon, it was at five thirty-one-point-one-seven. And of course, the spillover elevation is five thirty-two.
Okay, thank you.
All done.
Yeah. Just go and get used to that one. It doesn't matter if it's high or low, so. Finance? Okay, Eric?
Yes, Mayor and Council. Just want to remind everybody, and some have figured it out, that from a thirty-five express traffic alert, that four-oh-seven, the two lanes, east, one lane eastbound, one lane westbound, has been restored. Engineering is, we're looking at that to make sure that lights are working as best as possible. Again, that'll be in that condition, uh, for probably, uh, ten or twelve months until the intersection is complete. But we do have two lanes, uh, back connecting, so we're excited about that.
Okay. Steve? Councilman Daniels?
Nothing, mayor.
Uh, yes, as of six-oh-five this evening, that intersection of I-35 Service Drive and
four-oh-seven was a disaster. And I hope it's not going to be like that for ten to twelve months.
I don't, it is bad. It's, it seems like it's backed up more than it was before, but, uh, there's so many people trying to try it out, too.
That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Gilmore?
Mayor, I just want to let some folks know, um, we have two phenomenal disc frisbee golf, um, disc golf, uh, courses here in Louisville. Um, one of them, at Lake Park, is going to be closed temporarily. In fact, it's closed now. We have a fabulous new hike and bike trail coming into Lake Park, so it's going to be, um, going through, much like our LL Woods, Woods Park. So, if you are visiting from another town, or you like to play disc golf, um, head on over to LL Woods. Uh, you can find it on the city map and play there until we get the great new hike and bike trail up, which I'm really excited to see, uh, over at Lake Park.
Good.
That's all I have, mayor.
City manager?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, mayor. Um, so first of all, Mr. Marvin, welcome. Uh, always am interested in the lake report personally, so, uh, and probably Councilman Tierney is too, so he has a boat out there. Uh, MCL Grand, sir?
That's our all-others.
Okay. The MCL Grand, uh, we have live performances coming up. Beauty and the Beast Junior by Frisco Youth Theater, January seventh through tenth. Uh, in the Black Box Songwriter Series on January tenth, Tom Faulkner is returning, along with Crystal Yates. And then the Texas Tune Series, which is, um, something I really enjoy, is, uh, starting up again this year on January twenty-third, and it features the return of Anson Funderberg and the Rockets, which put on a heck of a show in the past. So, I think a lot of people saw that and might want to go back and see what he's doing again. Uh, public events, um, we have a res, opening reception called A Few of My Favorite Things. Uh, that's on January ninth, but presented by the Visual Arts League, so that kicks off a show. And then Friday nights, we consistently have the Visual Arts League Jam Sessions, uh, that take place typically in the gallery, although sometimes those move into the, um, recital hall. Uh, art exhibits, I mentioned, A Few of My Favorite Things, uh, will open on January ninth. And then, uh, the ASL Award Winners, Winners' Choice opens in, on the same date in the North Quarter Gallery, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, nothing, sir.
Okay. Anything now about legal and city secretary? Officer, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, I was going to say, uh, I heard quite a few things over the holidays about city staff and, and, uh, people getting the holiday spirit moving forward, police officers checking the, uh, different stores, and it seemed to be fairly safe deal. A lot of comments about the fire truck going around, carrying Santa around, and, uh, I don't know how many kids and/or adults come out for that, but it, it was well received, I believe.
All of them, mayor. Every single one of them come out.
Yeah, it's good. Uh, I just wanted to remind everybody to, with the things that happened in the last couple of weeks, with all the rain and with the, uh, storms and tornadoes in, uh, Garland, Copeville, Rowlett area, it could happen anywhere at any time. We just need to be prepared for that and try to be as safe as possible. So, uh, next item is closed session. Okay, come on up here if you want to say something, but make it short, because this isn't the place to do it. So. Just come up to the microphone, give us your name and address, uh, street address for the record.
My name is Matthew McGee.
I can't hear you. Okay, we'll go back to the, uh.
There's only one, one reason why I came here, and it's just a question I wanted to ask.
We need to have you fill out a, uh, citizen card, uh, speaker.
Could you help him?
It's just a simple question about the Lake Louisville Dam.
Go ahead and.
That's the only question I want to ask, is the Lake Louisville Dam, status of it.
Okay, that's a core of engineer property, and they had, they were here at the last council meeting. Uh, is there anything else from the, the city staff that has any comments about the lake dam?
Mainly is what I wanted to ask about, why the repairs aren't being done.
Mayor, this isn't on the agenda, so we can't talk about it.
Okay.
Citizens.
It's really just one simple question.
Uh, th, this isn't the place to be talking about that. And it's a core of engineer property, and they were here at the open forum last meeting.
I don't know where else we would talk about it other than here.
Sir, uh, Mr. Backus will actually, uh, talk to you outside, and he can give you some information on how to contact the Corps directly and get your questions answered.
So, this isn't the place to talk about the Louisville Dam and the City of Louisville Town Hall meeting, all right?
Uh, first of all, this is not Louisville, the City of Louisville does not control the dam. We don't maintain it. We don't own it. So, but, Mr. Backus will meet you out in the lobby on that. Okay?
Is that, is that right, sir? The City of Louisville doesn't control the Louisville Dam?
No.
Interesting, okay.
Just we don't have anything to do with Louisville, Tennessee either. It's just, it's another name.
This is Louisville, Texas, and we happen to be ten fucking feet from the dam at the moment.
You're out of here, sir. Okay. Did I start the closed session at all last time? Just mentioned, okay. Okay. Closed session, item one, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, consultation with attorney pending litigation, TCEQ, uh, modification to municipal solid waste permit number one-three-one-two-A, TCEQ, uh, application to obtain municipal solid waste permit amendment, permit number one-three-one-two-B, the City of Louisville versus TCEQ, uh, D-one-G-N-15-2382 in Travis County, and the City of Louisville versus TCEQ-DN-GN-15-001-892 Travis County. Item two, section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, real estate property acquisition, and three, section five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, economic development deliberation regarding economic development, uh, negotiations. We're now in closed session. Thank you.
First time we come out and there was nobody here, right?
That is true.
Nobody.
Melinda?
A little Melinda.
Melinda's somebody.
Yeah. A little reconvene into regular session. Councilman Ferguson, do you have anything?
Yes, mayor. Uh, I move to authorize the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate and execute on behalf of the City of Louisville, a settlement agreement with the City of Farmers Branch related to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Modification to Municipal Solid Waste Permit Number Thirteen-twelve-A, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Application to Obtain Municipal Solid Waste Permit Amendment, Permit Number Thirteen-twelve-B, and any related lawsuits, including the City of Louisville versus Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, D-dash-one-dash-G-N-dash-15-dash-2382 Travis County, and the City of Louisville versus Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, D-dash-one-dash-G-N-dash-15-dash-001892 Travis County, and to execute any related documents deemed necessary.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. Anything for you? Okay. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Uh, Councilman Daniels, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I do. Make a motion to adjourn then.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We're adjourned.
We are adjourned.